How's it going ladies and gentlemen? My name is Michael Therville, photojournalist and sociologist here at Vada World News. As always, we do politics, geopolitics, local politics, state politics. I am your politic king. Today, we have a very special guest here. We will let her, as always, introduce herself. Ma'am?
My name is Raquel Hernandez Bujorn, and I'm running for Harris County Commissioner of Precinct Two.
Really? Let me ask you a quick question. What set that path for you to run for this particular political office?
I love our county. I love this city.
Okay.
I'm not a politician. For the last 16 years, I have owned and operated and grown a construction company.
Get out of town.
Yeah.
Now, look, there are not a lot of women that own construction companies. What is that like?
It's, uh, different. It was different.
What do you mean different?
When I started, well, I started in 2009.
Okay.
And there wasn't a lot of women in construction at that time. We've seen a lot of change in the industry, which is great. But yeah, I was just really passionate about helping our community. And my husband actually needed a job. And so I was like, what do you know how to do? And he says, well, I know a little bit about carpentry. I also finish some concrete.
Did you hire your husband?
Well, no, we're partners. He would say, I'm the boss, but, uh, but no, at the time, it was out of a need. And so we started the organization and just fell in love with, I fell in love with it because you get to meet different people and you're making communities a better, safer, stronger place.
Well, let me ask you, what is the role of a type of political office that you're running for? What do you guys do in this office?
So Commissioner is over budget is, is primary. I know that we just saw recently the events and trying to get to a balanced budget. There's a lot of different departments that the county oversees. And it's made up of, Harris County Commissioners Court is made up of four commissioners and one judge. We decide on setting the tax rate. We do disaster recovery.
Okay.
We oversee public safety, public health. And it has really made a very difficult turn, I want to say this, last six years on the court. Particularly for my area and my precinct, we've seen a lot more chronic homelessness.
We have. And here in Houston, 40% of people, our residents right here in Houston, are one paycheck away from eviction.
Yes.
You know, you dealing with money as a commissioner is a hot button thing right here in Houston. People want to know, where is the money going?
I do too. Uh, I think the issue we've seen is that the transparency is not really there.
Okay.
And I, actually, I can tell you, that's one thing that I want to see more of, especially for, for us at the taxpayer, is where is the money going? Because, I mean, our taxes have increased 30%.
They have.
Uh, over the last three years. The issue is, is that's not sustainable.
It is not, especially with the increase of rent.
Yes.
Uh, the fluctuation of rent from one day to the next, I mean, you can go to an apartment complex here in Houston and say, hey, I want to rent a two-bedroom apartment. It's going to cost you $936. The next day, it's $1,200. What happened?
Well, and then what happens is, is when, when your taxes go up, the rent has to go up too. So, so taxes are relative, not just to, to families or individuals who own property, but it, you will feel the impact as a renter as well.
Okay.
So it is important, uh, at Commissioners Court, to be more mindful of how does that impact the resident or the person that is living here? And it has made a huge negative impact because we didn't expect, like, none of us could have, you know, expected for the taxes to go up that substantially. And they blame it on, uh, Beryl, which is where a majority of-
Quick question, who is "they"?
Commissioners Court.
Okay.
So, so there is something that allows them to, during a year where we have a storm, to go beyond what the typical 3% cap increase on our taxes is. And that, and so when a disaster happens, it permits them to increase the tax without the voter's permission.
Really?
Yes.
Question, we had Hurricane Burl. We had that big, big ice storm several years ago.
Yes.
We just had, uh, not just had, but previously, there was Harvey. People are, in effect, still recovering from these storms, but the money was supposed to be set aside for the people of Houston. Where is the money?
Well, I always say, we can only identify where the money went based off of what they publicly tell us.
Understood.
Um, I would immediately want to do an audit to find out exactly where every single penny is being spent, but we can see publicly on the agenda, there's a lot of really interesting pet projects that end up slipping through as far as where our money's being spent.
Pet projects like what?
Well, you know, while we're all struggling and trying to make our bills and the everyday hard-working person is just trying to make it, like you said, um, you know, they decided to, the, my commissioner from Precinct Two, Garcia, decided to spend $468,000 on an adult softball tournament, you know?
Why? There are homeless people right here in the streets of Houston. More importantly, we have homeless veterans right here in Houston. Potholes, infrastructure, things like that need to be fixed. Why?
Yeah, they're canceling flood projects that we voted for and we paid for.
Okay.
Um, and still, they found the money to do something like that. I mean, my kid is in baseball, you know, when he's in Little League, both of my kids, you know, we have to fundraise.
We do.
And so to give money away to an adult league, I think, was mind-boggling at a moment in time when we were at a deficit, when there's programs, uh, that I know, there was a lot of advocacy for, um, to try to, you know, maintain and support. Uh, we saw judges, um, get let go on the court. We know how much of a nightmare it is at-
It is.
-at processing, and they canceled out administrative judges and, and that whole budget, um, just, you know, is gone. Uh, so unfortunately, we're seeing a real struggle right now as far as being heard. We have our concerns, but we're not being heard.
Let me ask you a question here, and I think a lot of voters want to know right here in Houston. If you were elected to this particular office, how would you fix or solve these problems that have been plaguing Houston since, like, forever?
So number one, we have to get rid of the waste.
What is, okay, what waste?
I say waste is wasteful spending.
Okay.
Um, another example of wasteful spending is, we just saw a 12-page magazine go out in the mail.
Okay.
I mean, it's cover to cover. Um, it is election year, and we paid for that. I mean, just to send, uh, something like that is at minimum $3 to $5 per book. There's 450,000 residents in my precinct at minimum.
Wow.
And every address got one. So, you know, when you do the math, again, we have to get rid of those kind of decisions, which, by the way, the commissioner has discretion to be able to utilize that. And he, and if you hear him refer to the budget, he refers to it as it's his budget.
Does he?
Yes, it's his money, it's his budget, even though it's really our money and our taxes and our, and I think, to me, I'm just like everyone else, where I'm exhausted hearing about it. We all work really hard to pay our taxes.
People do.
And so we have to stop the waste, um, to answer your question. And if we can figure out, which I can almost assure you, there's got to be at least a 2% right off top of wasteful spending where we can really, um, cut costs without impacting, you know, the, the services that the county already provides, uh, and put that money back into the, the everyday taxpayer. You know, we really need to figure that out because I just don't understand how we've inflated our taxes by almost 30%. They manage over, uh, a $2.7 billion budget in the general fund.
Okay.
In addition to that, they also oversee the Harris County Toll Road Authority. Um, that budget also adds an additional $2 to $3 billion in revenue a year.
Really?
Uh, which-
Where does that money go?
So that is supposed to be primarily to maintain the infrastructure for the Harris County Toll Road Authority. Um, however, they always tend to call it a surplus. And that money that's left over, which on average is about $400 million annually, gets split between the four commissioners, which goes into their general fund, which they can then decide to use on things like public safety or, um, infrastructure projects. Um, but what we're seeing is a lot of the surplus funds are, are not necessarily being pushed in the most efficient manner. Um, there's a lot of projects, particularly that the county oversees, in infrastructure that's not being delivered on time and on budget. We're seeing a lot of budget overages, which you can, you can catch on the agenda items when they ask for requests for change orders. Um, and a lot of that just goes back to the root of, we're not designing our projects correctly or as efficiently as we, we could.
How would you design these projects, infrastructure, transportation? I know Metro has been looking to expand for years since they put the train line here and have been unsuccessful in doing so. Like, how would you tackle those issues if elected?
So let me give you a good example.
Okay.
Um, I did a project, and the ADA compliance was different for the county than it was for the city of, of Houston.
Why?
And when I say ADA compliance means, like, how our ramps are designed and poured at the end of sidewalks and crosswalks. Um, because of the inconsistencies and the differences between the city of Houston and the county, it ended up costing the county taxpayers, uh, money for us to redo it several times.
Which is why they're probably out there right now redoing sidewalks.
Correct.
Okay, so we have that zoning issue, that does sound like a zoning issue, uh, and a tad bit about that, so everyone can understand. Uh, Hollywood has been looking to come to Houston for a very long time because it's cheaper to produce films here. One of their number one complaints was that we have no zoning laws, which means that, hey, they want to shoot on XYZ block, but when they shoot that camera one way, they getting one shot, and then they turn that camera around on the same block, they getting something totally different, and therefore, it is inconsistency within the shot. Is Houston looking to address that? I know this may be beyond the scope of you being a commissioner, but it's something to think about.
Yeah, I think, um, you know, zoning and getting, the issue we've had is the city of Houston and the county kind of work on their own accord, especially when it comes to how things are designed or underground, um, utility systems or drainage systems even. Uh, the Flood Control District is something that is managed by the Harris County, uh, Court.
Okay.
And as far as oversight goes. Um, but to answer your first question, before getting into zoning, you know, the way to fix it is, is we have to hire the right people to do the job.
Are you implying that the right people have not been hired?
Well, absolutely. So I'll give you, I'll give you a good, a good, a specific example.
Thank you.
Yeah, so the Ship Channel project, um, was a $1 billion project.
Okay.
This was a project that was supposed to, um, be delivered several years ago. The engineering firm that was originally engaged, um, designed a bridge that was signed off, started actual construction. In the middle of construction, there was another bridge in the state of Florida that had collapsed by the same engineering firm.
Really? And they brought that same engineering firm here?
Correct. And so what ended up happening to the taxpayer on the taxpayer's dime is, we had to do a whole investigation, we had to stop construction, had to hire a new engineering firm, deconstruct what was already done, and pay for it to be done again.
Wow.
So we're, we are about 400 to maybe almost $500 million over budget.
Okay.
On that one ship.
Because of that.
Because we hired the wrong firm.
Now, how did they find this particular firm? I mean, they can go anywhere in the country and find a firm, but why this particular one, and who possibly benefits from that?
So we really have to, we here at the Court, there is some major issues with the RFP and solicitation process.
Okay.
The RFP means Request for Proposal. So, so what happens is, is when there's a need for a project, they put out to solicitation this opportunity for qualified firms to put their name in the hat to get the job.
Okay.
Um, typically, how it works at the county is, you have to be either the lowest bidder, and if you, unless it's a request for qualification, which means RFQ.
Okay.
And, uh, and then there's a committee that decides. Now, what we've seen is, there's a lot of inconsistencies in this whole process because there's also set-asides where, at the commissioner's discretion, they can direct, uh, who they want to hire without going through a, um, you know-
A formal process?
Well, a formal process for that particular project. Um, they might be on a vendor list, or maybe they were qualified a year ago or two years ago, but they're not requiring every single time, uh, for certain projects to, to be awarded based off of going through the vetting.
Okay.
So what happens when you do that is, you get, like, what has recently happened with TSU, um, which is-
They're actually in, under investigation right now, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, Governor Greg Abbott of Texas is launching an investigation, or talked about launching an investigation into Texas Southern University, locally known as TSU.
Yes, and, and they have found, um, several thousand contracts awarded to vendors that were not even properly vetted and, and had expired as a vendor in the system, which means that they were just in the system from several years ago, there hadn't been an updated-
Okay.
-process to make sure that they were still qualified to get these contracts. There was also a lot of contracts that were awarded even prior to solicitation date.
Really?
Meaning, like, you know, behind closed doors, you have leadership deciding who's going to get what, or maybe it was just a procurement officer or, um, someone that works under procurement. And so, you know, there's almost, I think, I want to say there was at least $300 million.
$300 million. Is this taxpayer money?
This is taxpayer money.
Okay.
And so we believe, I, I believe, just knowing from my background in construction, you know, it's very interesting watching what is happening right now at Harris County Court because you see, there's a really huge division between Ellis and Hidalgo against Garcia and Briones. And, you know, Hidalgo's not running again for, for judge. Um, so it's interesting hearing some of the things that are coming out, and one of the the red flags that she is raising is, it has to do with how contracts are awarded. And as a contractor who has gone through the process, I can tell you that, you know, understanding some of the facts that have been put out to the public as far as, you know, you can just give away taxpayer money to a, a vendor who may not be qualified, or maybe they've just been in the system for several years, and that's how it's always been, just simply because the commissioner wants to do that. Uh, they have authority to do that right now.
Wow.
So it's, it could, it could have, uh, cost us, you know, millions upon millions of dollars for us not enforcing a policy and procedure to make sure that we're only hiring the most qualified and the best every single time, uh, because what ends up happening is, when you don't, that you can end up in a $400 million deficit on a project.
Let's switch gears here. Let's talk about women in the construction industry. You know, I, I just find it fascinating that this is what you do. How would you help women obtain more of these contracts? Or is that even such a thing?
I think, um, I'm very proud to be a pioneer, as one of the first.
Okay.
But I think it does start with the removing the mental, uh, block, uh, that there was always an assumption, for whatever reason, uh, that women probably couldn't be in this industry for a long time.
Really, so there's a stigma?
There was a stigma, yeah. And, and it's really refreshing to see that has evolved, and it is not like that anymore. I mean-
Great.
Yeah, and, and I think, um, you know, there's so much that goes into construction besides just being out there swinging a hammer.
Understood.
Not to say that I haven't done that. I know how to operate machinery, I know how to push concrete. I really enjoy working out in the field, uh, with everyone. Uh, but there's a lot of different things that go into building a construction company. Um, you have, uh, you have the whole procurement process, like I was saying, where you have to put together bids, you have, of course, the accounting of it, you have the marketing, the business development aspect, and then you have the engineering, the project management. Um, so there's a lot of different departments, and the great thing about construction is, is that you see people with backgrounds, uh, where maybe they have a second-grade education or they didn't go to school at all.
Really?
Would be really vibrant and successful at it. Um, and then you also see people that have doctorates, you know, being really successful in it.
Understood.
So I think, um, you know, this whole thing, it's, it has evolved recently, I want to say in the last five years, where, um, you know, we're just, it's not even a thing anymore. If, if, it's becoming not a thing anymore, uh, that just because you're a woman, that you're not, you know, you don't have the same opportunity.
Understood.
Um, in this particular field. It really is more based on, what is your qualification? Can you make this project come to life? Do you know how to manage a budget? Um, and can you manage people?
Okay.
And I have to say, women are incredible when it comes to managing people because, you know, we have the patience, we have that, uh, natural, I don't know, most of the time, we just, I mean, I'm more attentive as, as a mother.
I can understand that.
Yeah.
I think a lot of people can understand that.
You have to be able to also deal with conflict.
And multitasking?
And multitasking, and, uh, and so I, I am all for, um, women and just letting anybody who's thinking about it, like, oh, I can't do it because I'm a woman. I think that's all lies. You can definitely do it. Uh, do it, it's a great, uh, business, and you can definitely succeed, so.
Let's ask a question here. As a commissioner, if elected to this position, where would you make fiscal cuts?
Um, well, I can tell you, like, for example, that, that mailer that consistently goes out, I want to say there's probably millions of dollars being wasted on silly things like that. I think there's much more cost-efficient ways to communicate with community by holding community forums in addition to digital, as well as text messaging. Um, so, you know, not to say that those aren't important every now and then, if they really are critical for the community to be informed on, uh, but, you know, that's one thing that really needs to get tightened up. Um, there's also, you know, these, these interesting pet project donations, such as the softball tournament. That's just not going to happen with me as commissioner. I really, uh, need to understand and justify every single penny, as all of us deserve to know, that if we're going to sign up to spend our taxpayer money, the money that we went out and worked hard for, then it needs to have a complete positive immediate impact to our everyday life.
Understood.
And so there has to be justification for that. And so I, I'm, you know, I support a lot of really, uh, great, you know, we have a nonprofit ourselves, my husband and I, um, but that's stuff that comes out of our own personal pocket. You know, I would never, I wouldn't, um, ask the taxpayer, you know, to pay their taxes and then me go do whatever, you know, personal thing that I am passionate about, um, unless it was going to immediately and directly impact the, the residents and individuals from our community.
Understood. On the opposite end, where would you increase funding?
Um, well, I would definitely not be canceling 27 flood mitigation projects. I think that should have been a non-negotiable, uh, there. I believe that a lot of the, even the budgetary, um, when they go to build a budget for a project, a lot of it comes out to be inflated because they take into account inflation and, over the years, and how long is it going to take from solicitation to execution in construction. Uh, so I don't really think there needs to be an increase. I, I really think that we're at a point to where our budget is so, uh, inflated and there's more than enough. I mean, there doesn't need to be an increase. We need to see decreases. We need to see decreases, and we need to cut costs, and we really need to fight hard for us, for, for people that live here, um, that pay their taxes. We need our money back. Like, we need every cent that we can get right now.
Really? Are we in dire straits? Because when you, people, when people say, we need every penny, every cent that we have, to me, as a journalist, that rings bells of, okay, we're in trouble.
We are in trouble.
How much trouble are we in, here in Houston?
We were able to balance the budget. Originally, they were in a $200 million deficit, and they got it down to zero. Um, a lot of the ways that they were able to do that was one-time funding, um, special things, like selling a piece of property that Harris County has owned, that, uh, they're going to sell off this year to make up for whatever deficit in, in this department.
Okay.
So what they're saying is, is they're anticipating another deficit for next year's budget, and they're not-
How big of a deficit?
It could be, again, another couple hundred million dollars, except for next time, they're not going to have these one-time solutions anymore. And, and so what does that mean? Well, that means that if they're going to be facing a deficit without really analyzing how they're going to be more efficient with cost, um, and then you have a project like the Ship Channel that keeps bleeding the taxpayers, then they're going to come back to the public and ask for a tax increase. Or they're just going to do it, or they're going to pray for a storm next year so that they can just automatically do it.
You know, you would be the second candidate who alluded to the fact that oftentimes, they wait until a storm occurs in order to either, A, affect the change, or to just quote-unquote "see what happens"?
Yeah, and that's something that Governor Abbott had just recently announced in his relaunch, uh, that really does need to change at the, at the legislation level in the state because no local government should have the authority to raise your taxes 30% over three years.
Wow, that's 10, 10% per year on average?
Yes, and one of those years was just, I mean, it hit everybody, like, in the face with a frying pan. Like, nobody expected to have to pay double than what they paid the year prior. You don't anticipate that in a budget.
You don't?
Nobody anticipates a disaster. Um, and so what he is stating that, you know, he's going to be fighting for this next go is to put laws in place to prevent local, uh, governments, such as Harris County Commissioners Court, from being able to do that again. And it should take a two-thirds vote, um, of the public to decide if they want to go ahead and increase the taxes substantially.
Here's a question. Wintertime is quickly approaching us right here in Houston. Uh, for those that are watching, for the last two days, it was exceptionally cold. Today, it is guaranteed to be, what, 75, 80 degrees?
Yes.
But we have wintertime coming.
Yes.
What is going to happen, or what do you predict to happen as far as budget-wise for the winterization of Houston?
I mean, they've taken some money from the rainy day fund, which is a little bit scary.
Hmm.
And, you know, to answer your question, I really do pray like everyone else that we don't see a disaster like that because I don't really think that there is enough preparedness or funding in order, in order to, to manage such a disaster.
So you, you are effectively saying that Houston, at this present time, is not ready to deal with a winter storm?
Well, I mean, they'll manage it the way that they did the last time, uh, but what we saw was, there was actually a lot of issues, particularly with CenterPoint, um, and the freeze. Uh, you know, people need to have their electricity. Um, CenterPoint is the, the organization that Texas contracts with in order to manage all of that, that system, um, and the grid. And, um, but as far as, like, you know, being able to be boots on the ground and being able to really help during a disaster, I mean, we haven't, thank God, had to endure us, anything severe as, like, what happened with Harvey. But I, I would be lying if I said that I personally am not, I mean, I'm, I would be incredibly nervous if something like that were to happen. I don't think, uh, based off of what we know and where we've seen in budget, I'm not sure if they have a strong enough, um, you know, system in order to quickly get back everything running as quick as it should.
I think a lot of viewers appreciate your transparency and honesty here. Final question. Although Texas is a red state, Houston, Texas, however, is a blue pocket.
We're purp.
Purple?
[laughing]
Okay, okay. But people typically vote Democrat here in Houston.
Yes.
As a Republican, why should a Democrat here in Houston vote for you for a commissioner?
So I think we get really confused, uh, many times on what the differences of party are.
Okay.
Uh, I, as a Republican, I am a business owner, I am a capitalist, I believe in lower taxes, I believe in less government. I don't like the government telling me that I have to pay more money so that they can go spend it on softball games. I'm against that. Um, I also am about, um, life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness and freedom. I think everybody should have the opportunity, and I believe in the American dream still because I've lived it, um, that, you know, I'm more, uh, about creating opportunities for people to be able to be successful instead of creating systems where people are, are chained to those systems. Because let me tell you-
Understood.
A, a system that makes you believe that you absolutely, uh, have to have them and you will not survive is a system that is controlled by someone else. And so I always say, you know, a system that feeds you is a system that can, to our view-
This is true.
A system that houses you is a system that can make you houseless.
I think a lot of people are actually experiencing that with the whole EBT, food stamp snap-
Yes.
-governmental subsidy programs.
Yes, and, and it's- Yes, and, and it's so heartbreaking to hear, uh, the stories of how, you know, of course, there are families and people that need that to survive. Um, but what makes me really heartbroken is the people that have been stuck in that survival mode for decades. And, and I believe, uh, that there should be more, uh, creation of opportunities to help these individuals to get out of that cycle versus impressing upon them that you have to vote for me because I believe that you can't survive without it.
Wow.
And so I say to all of my, um, you know, voters out there, I don't care how you voted before. If you believe, which I believe ninety percent of the people are gonna agree with everything that I just said, then you need to vote for me. And, um, and that right now means that we are the working, uh, class party, especially regionally. Like, I, I can guarantee you, I will fight like hell to do everything that we can before I go back to the everyday hard-working Houstonian and people that live in the county to ask them to pay for my misgivings or, or bad leadership decisions that, uh, like what we've seen in, at Commissioner's Court. It's wrong. Um, it, it's hurting all of us. And we need to do better because we deserve better. So, you know, don't make this so much about, I know we see in the news a lot of, um, there's this rhetoric of, you know, oh, you know, you see the far left and you see the far right constantly working about or fighting about, um, about these one percent issues.
Okay.
I'm more about, we need to focus on the issues that we can actually control here. Um, and your vote does matter, but the local governance controls the outcome of your everyday, day-to-day. And that is Harris County Commissioners Court. So you need to activate, you need to get involved, you need to go to voteforraquel.com, you need to donate support. Uh, because this campaign is not about me, it's about all of us.
Understood.
And I want everybody to know that, uh, their voice does matter. Um, and you do need to, to get in on this race because I am really nervous that if we don't do something, uh, telling you they're gonna go back to you next year and they're gonna say, give me more money.
Wow, that is really something. Where can people find you?
Voteforraquel.com, V-O-T-E, number four, R-A-Q-U-E-L, dot com. You can also follow me on social media. I'm very active there. Um, and we are starting block walking. I'm hosting events. I'm always out in the community. If there's an event that you have going on or even, you know, I've gone to, um, uh, city council, community meetings, uh, civic clubs. I mean, I want to hear from the community what's going on in your neighborhood. Uh, what are the issues that you want to talk about? And that way, that gives me the insight, especially right now in running this campaign to talk about it. I mean, I don't, I don't believe that we should wait, uh, for me to get elected. I'm claiming it now in the name of Jesus. But I, I think these are issues that we should publicly talk about it now. We should hold accountability now to the leaders that are currently in office and start asking the questions. Like, like you said, transparency, where is our money? What's happening? Um, you know, these are things that we should be holding them accountable now. And the cool thing about that is, is because it is election year, we're gonna start seeing some of these individuals do right by the public because they want to win. So, you know, it's our chance to get some of these broken things corrected. And, and I want everyone to remember that, um, you know, it's, they might bandage some of these issues, but we gotta think long-term. And we just, we deserve better. So.
Raquel?
Raquel.
Raquel, I am very sorry. Let me make my apologies about that. She is running for county commissioner, a woman of conviction, passion and accountability, more importantly. If you have an issue with the way that the county is spending its funds, this is the woman that you need to be talking to right here, right now. Make sure you reach out to her via Instagram. My name is Michael Thurble, photojournalist and sociologist here at Veda World News. We look forward to seeing you on the next episode. Thank you.